Justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of Mexico. The assembly of our collective friendship among United cultures.
Good morning. By God, we just come this day and celebrate all that you've given for us. Lord God, we forget how awesome you are. Let us ever be mindful that your word is as true today as the day it was given. We thank you for who you are, who you have always been, who you will always be in our lives. Lord God, thank you for the wisdom that you impart on those that make decisions for Eddy County. Lord, let us be a beacon of light in the darkness. Let us be a shining example of what all counties represent, and that would be the citizens of their county. Lord God, we ask you to bless those that are in danger this day. Bless those and be with those that are affected by this crazy virus, by hurricanes, by fire. Lord, we're so blessed when we look around and see that we have none of those crazy things that the weather is bringing about. So, thank you again for who you are. Thank you for wisdom to represent those that we're here today to represent in Jesus' sweet and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Good prayer.
Good. Good prayer.
Okay. Public comments. Do we have some comments? Come on up.
Morning, Commissioner.
Not used to hearing that.
You're always one, one sheep in one.
Good morning, Commissioners and County staff and everyone. I'd like to comment a little bit on the resolution, R-20-77. And I'm in favor of it, and I think most of y'all would be, but I just wanted to comment about a few things about that. It's a resolution matching NMDOT funding for alternate routes. And a little history on that. There was a wreck down on 285 one Sunday, I think it's in January about three years ago. Our fire department was there, it was at the bend where the bridge is. And they were stuck working on that wreck. In the meantime, state police were down there at Malaga directing traffic. And the only two ways they could go was either east or west. The west was Black River Village. Most of the traffic was going west, from what I understand, and they were going down Higbee Hole. A constituent sent me a picture of truck traffic going south, down the hill, down to the Black River Crossing, Low Water Crossing. And there was an STN pickup going the other way. You could see two wet water tracks, I mean tracks in the tires, that he had been down in the river itself. And so, anyway, what I'm getting at is, I'm just tickled to see that this is on there. And I see it's on the ICIP as number, I think, seven or something like six or seven, somewhere in there. I don't, guess it's behind here. But anyway, I'm tickled to see that, so I see, I imagine some of that funding. It says $2 million, number six, yeah. We go to that because back then, when I was Commissioner, I pointed out to a lot of county people about there needs to be more work done in the future if there's a wreck on 285 between Higbee Hole Road, where it meets at Nitter Loving, and also down at Malaga. Because the only alternative route is Higbee Hole Road or Old Cavern Highway. And I got some pushback from several departments. That's not our job and all this kind of stuff. And I thought, well, whose job is it? So, anyway, this might alleviate some of that, because if there's a wreck, you've got to think about the alternate routes. So, anyway, I just wanted to mention that, that I'm in favor of it and I'm glad to see it. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Good to see you.
Okay. Any other public comments or announcements? Okay, moving on. Bid awards. Kristen.
Nabotny.
Nabotny.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The only thing I have is IFB 20-05, which is the law enforcement vehicle outfitting, outfitting. Sealed bids were open on August the 20th. Four of them were received from WAC Outfitters, American Emergency Products, White Trash Trailers, and Deans Incorporated. They were asked to outfit 12 total 2021 Chevrolet Tahos. The lowest overall bid was submitted by WAC Outfitters. And it is requested that this award be made to WAC Outfitters with a total bid of $150,419.
Okay. Questions?
I do not have any.
Commissioner McCutcheon. Commissioner Wood.
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve IFB 20-05, law enforcement vehicle outfitting for the Sheriff's Department.
Second. Have a motion and second. Call for the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a public hearing. Eddy County Manufactured Home Placement Orders Replacing 0, or O-16-87. So, I want to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we open the public hearing for O-20-99.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Call for the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Okay.
It's throwing you off only having four, huh?
Moving on. Staff comments.
Morning, Steve.
Good morning, Commissioners. Commissioners, I don't know that I really have any comments, aside from the fact that we've only done what we presented to you. Remove the fees and forms from the ordinance so that we can re-adopt those separately where they're in a more maintainable fashion through resolution rather than ordinance. Other than that, Cass cleaned up a couple of misspellings that were in the ordinance. Aside from that, it is the same ordinance that we had.
So, we really haven't changed anything other than done some cleanup?
So, it's a process that allows us to keep the forms and fees current through resolution rather than having to continue to amend an ordinance. So, it's for operating effectiveness.
Okay. Can, do we have any questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Crockett?
No.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No.
Which, okay. We'll move on to public comments. Three minutes limit. Do we have any public comment?
Good morning again, I'm James Walterschut. And so, my comments are the same comments I made three years ago, or whatever it was, when we went through this thing. The biggest problem I had with this whole ordinance was the definition of manufactured home. It starts off reading this thing means immovable or portable housing structure over 32 foot in length and over eight foot in width construct to be towed on its own chassis and designed to be installed with or without permanent foundation for human occupancy as a residence and may include one or more components that may retract it for towing purposes. And it goes on, some other language. Anyway, my problem with this whole thing is that I wanted to include the phrase commonly called a trailer house or mobile home to make it clear to the public who reads this ordinance, because it wasn't clear, it's not clear. And at the time, I remember I got some pushback from the county attorney about this. He said it would change the ordinance too much. And I didn't think so, just adding the phrase calmly called mobile home or trailer house. Because that's what most people think of it. You know, it goes on later in this definition. Manufactured home does not include recreational vehicles or modular pre-manufactured homes. So, why don't they call it mobile home? And it's the old saying about if it quacks like a duck, flies like a duck, and leaf droppings like a duck kind of applies here. It's a mobile home or trailer house, and I think that should be included. Another thing in this whole thing is the definition, or, I mean, it says 5.2. Manufactured home shall not be used for storage or commercial endeavor unless modified, comply with all requirements in the Mexico Building Code, NEC Code, electric code, plumbing and mechanical code. Well, I have a trailer, a mobile home, that's full of furniture, used furniture. So, according to this, I can't use it for storage. And I know where it's coming from, and the def, back then, they said it was for storage for people who want to pack it in with some lot of heavy stuff and maybe some illegal stuff. I don't know what the, I don't, anyway, it kind of is one of these things I call a do-gooder clause. And then, the other one is 7.2. Under site requirements, it shall be unlawful for any person install, connect, or be instrumental in assisting in installation of any electrical service, gas service, water service, or liquid waste to any manufactured home that has not been issued a permit in accordance with this ordinance. Well, my reading on this is it kind of pertains to the utilities. If they hook it up without a permit, then they're in violation of this ordinance. And so, my kind of question is, you know, that should, all the utilities should have been contacted to notify them of this particular stipulation. I don't know if y'all read it the same way, but that's the way I read it. So, anyway, I just want to leave it in your hands that I don't, I think this, there's a couple changes need to be made. And I know it, the main thing, like Steve McCroskey said, was for the fee schedule. And I'm surprised that we left that in there back then. Kind of like, wow. Anyway, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, James.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Nothing.
Okay. County attorney.
I don't have any other additional comments.
Okay. County Commissioners, comments and questions. Commissioner Crockett.
I do not have any, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner McCutcheon.
No, sir.
Okay. Entertaining motion that we approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve ordinance 0-20-99, the Eddy County Manufactured Home Placement Ordinance, replacing 0-16-87.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Call for the vote?
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Carlson. McCutcheon.
McCroskey.
Yes. McCutcheon's vote is yes.
I know you are, really, I do.
Okay.
I take the minutes next time.
Do we have any additional comments or are questions from the Commissioners?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McCutcheon.
And Mr. Woods.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Call for the vote?
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Okay. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, moving on. Tailing agenda. Do we have a commission meeting, or, any changes to the commission meeting minutes for August the 4th?
I did not have any, Mr. Chairman.
No, sir.
No.
Okay. Then I, then I would like, is there any change for the commission meeting minutes for August the 18th?
No, sir.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept those?
Did you both it once? Did you both at one time?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the commission meeting minutes for August 4th and August 18th of 2020.
Second.
Do I have a motion and second? Call for the vote?
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon. Yes.
Okay, moving on. Purchase card report. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Crockett?
No, sir.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No.
Okay. Going to take, entertain a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the P. Project Report for 2020. Second.
Have a motion and second. Call for the vote?
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon. Yes.
Okay. Treasurers' report. Information only.
Information only. You all would have received a copy of that report. Lots of pages in that report, lots of transactions for the county, so, information.
Okay. July 2020 Revenue Report, Roberta Smith.
Morning, Roberta.
Good morning.
Got to smile a little bit, it's early.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the July 2020 Revenue Report for our grocery receipts tax, we collected $1.2 million for GRT, which is a little bit over our budgeted amount of $1.1 million. For oil and gas, we collected measly $639,000, the lowest we've collected in years. That number was based on May's business activity. So, it was around 13 million barrels that we were producing, and then the price was averaging around $14 for that month, so.
That was whenever oil went to below zero?
Right.
Yes.
Right. So, we were about $14 average on that one. So, I'll hold my comments for August, even though we've got an August revenues report. But I do see that as being our lowest month of this fiscal year. That was really the bottom.
Bottom of the barrels.
Yeah.
I don't think that, that before that, oil had ever gone to zero before.
That's, that's those traders nonsense.
Yeah.
There's speculation. Anyway.
So, we did miss our budgeted mark for July, you know, $1.2 million for oil and gas, but it has increased. Obviously, we've got our August revenue, but I'll save that for next month. But it will start increasing, but it'll take a few months to catch back up on that, that missed number. So, I'll stand for any other questions.
Any questions?
No, sir.
No.
McCutcheon?
No.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the revenue report?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the July 2020 Revenue Report as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Call for the vote?
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Okay. Budget versus actual, July revenue versus expenses. And expenses, Roberta Smith.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, could you scroll up, please? For the July budget versus actual, could you scroll up just a little bit more? On both sides of revenue and expenses, we collected around $24 million and expensed around that much as well, too, giving us 25% collected and 19% expense. However, $17.6 million of both of those numbers are transfers. So, transfers in and transfers out, they account for revenues and expenses. And those are just our annual transfers that we normally have done to the road department and out of the capital improvement fund. They were all our budgeted transfers. So, $17.6 million of both of those numbers are the transfers. So, it's only around $6 million we've expensed and collected for July. So, I'll stand for any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Take a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve budget versus actual July revenue and expenses. Second.
Have a motion and second. Call for the vote?
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion, direction, and recommendation for the fiscal year end 2019, 2020 surplus. Roberta Smith.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Alan and I are presenting this to you for our surplus. We did this last year. For our 1920 fiscal year ended, we ended with a $12.4 million surplus overall in general fund. So, we're coming to you, making the recommendation. We are asking to commit $5 million to the road construction fund. That resolution is going to be presented to you in the consent agenda. That's R-2077 for the alternate routes. So, we are suggesting we move $5 million for those matching funds into the road construction fund. And then, the remaining $7.4 million to the capital improvement fund for capital purchases. And just as last year, if that's a change in recommendation, you know, in December, when we do mid-year review, we can always move those monies. It just has to come back to commission for approval through an agenda request, so. But as of right now, that's our recommendation to move the remaining $7.4 to capital improvement fund.
Commissioner Crockett?
Alan, don't have any comments at the moment. Commissioner McCutcheon kind of has my comments and Commissioner Henry's comments, so I'll let him speak.
Commissioner McCutcheon? I've got a few, I've got a few questions, I guess. The road construction fund, is that an internal fund? Is that Jason's fund, or is that just our general road construction fund?
It's a separate, it's a special revenue fund, separate from the road fund and separate from the general fund. So, it's just a special revenue fund. Nothing sits in there right now as to speak. What used to sit in there was the money that we were contributing to our FEMA roads, our contribution for that. So, there's, there's not a lot of money left in there, so, but there's no active projects in there.
Is, is that money considered encumbered if it's in that fund?
It's a committed fund. So, what happens is, right now, through an agenda request, if you decide to move that money in there, it's committed based on your gender request approval. And then, if you decide to recommit them, then it just has to come back to commission for approval for that.
It's like a segment's account.
Okay. So, we, I mean, it can't be touched? We've got it?
If you commit, if you commit it for that $5 million for the alternate routes, it is committed for that. If you want to use it for something else, it'll have to come back for reapproval.
Okay.
But we have the contract from NMDOT, and so, our thought was that we set those monies aside. We've got the match, so we've got $10 million aggregate, and the contract from NMDOT is in this agenda.
Okay.
So, basically, that will allow us to do the work that we planned, that Jason's outlined, for those routes that NMDOT is aligned with. So, of the 12.7, we've got $5 million set aside specifically to take on those roads. And, you know, Old Cavern and a couple of others that will, will be done. And utilize the state money before it disappears.
And, and the $7.4 in the capital improvement fund, what's the, what's the ins and outs of that fund? And where can that money be committed?
So, it's, it's the same situation as the road construction fund. It's just a special revenue fund that funds can be committed to it. But again, if something changes and the commission decides to use that money elsewhere, those funds can be recommitted elsewhere. And we did that last year, if you remember. We moved $7 million in there last year. And what we did is we moved it back to general fund for operations for this fiscal year that we're in. So, they can be recommitted.
Okay, so that, but the capital improvement fund, that's also roads as well?
It is not. It's capital improvement all around, so it could be any capital.
But it can be roads.
It could be roads, yes.
It's not specifically tied to roads, but it can be.
Correct.
There was a, there was a particular project that was a capital improvement and not regular maintenance or whatever you could.
Landscaping for the front of her office.
That could be a capital, a capital project. If you wanted to, here goes Eddie sign in the middle of green. That could be a cap.
There we go. Is that a vote? We taking a vote on that?
I'm all for it.
We might have to see if we could find an actor, Eddie the Horse Actor.
He'd starve to death.
Yeah, he doesn't need our phone. Okay. So, does that, does that help?
It, it does, it does. So, so in talking to Commissioner Henry yesterday, we talked about, about, you know, what we would kind of like to see with these. And his desire is, and mine, mine lines up almost exactly with it, that, that we want to commit, you know, the surplus to roads. So, as long as we have those funds accessible and we can, we can pull them to roads. We want to pull out about 10% and set aside for a rainy day, like when Brian had to do the air conditioners. I think it was the air conditioners or something that the, the what?
The chiller. A few years ago.
The chiller. Yeah, what was it, $800,000 bucks or something like that? It was expensive?
Probably like $380,000. Pretty high.
Okay, so it was $400,000 bucks or whatever, but it was, but it was, you know, an un.
Unplanned expense.
Unplanned expense. So, I believe Commissioner Henry is, is on the same page as I am. We'd like to pull, and, and that's why, that's why we have Roberta here, and she's amazing at, at being able to handle these things. My goal for our surplus is to make sure that they're encumbered and they cannot be swept, and that we have them available, you know, all but 10% available for roads. If we only leave 10% in the capital improvement fund, I'm okay with that, because we still can commit it to roads when the time, when the time comes. I like the $5 million for the, for the NMDOT matching projects, but I would like to pull out 10%, you know, say, what, 1.2 million, something like that. And I don't know where we put it. Maybe we just leave it all in the capital improvement fund.
10% of the 7 million?
Of the 12.
12.
Of, of the surplus. And stick it, so, about, yeah, about 1.24 million, I guess it would be for just rainy day. But I don't know where we put that, Roberta, and that would be Commissioner Henry's desire as well.
And that's one of, that's one of the suggestions as to why we suggest to move it to another committed fund, so it's not sitting in general fund, so we don't get questioned on high general fund balances. We're actually moving it to a special revenue fund. And like I said, those monies can always be recommitted elsewhere. So, if something happens on facilities and Brian needs $800,000, it's just as easy as an agenda request to come forward, say we want to move $800,000 to general fund for maintenance and repair rights. Right. So, that is why we make that suggestion, is to move it into a new special, special revenue. Also, too, because it's harder to keep track, rolling over year by year, because the 10%, if we put it in back to general fund and then gets rolled over year after year, it's in that big pot of money, basically, so.
So, we, we essentially have what we're wanting to do here, I guess, committed in both of these funds. And is that what I'm hearing?
We just need to be diligent about when projects come to be asked for out of this fund that we, if it is, if it's a road fund or is another special capital outlay, that we leave a reserve in there for unplanned expenditures for facilities or something that would be capital, so that we can cover them.
And if you'd like to make that in your motion, we can do that. And then, 10% of the 12 million, we're, will always stay in that capital improvement fund if that's what you would like.
Okay. Unless we, unless we want to dip into that specifically for a specific, so we can, so we can make that in the motion. We say about $5 million to go to the road construction fund, $3,500 for NMDOT with, I mean, I guess it's, what's it going to be? $6 million, basically $6 million to stay in the capital improvement fund with 1.2, well, it's going to be 7.4. Okay. I understand. All right. Sorry. Just practicing. Trying to get the first mistakes out of the way here. But anyways. So, I, I believe Chairman Carlson, I think my questions are done, and I hope I've relayed John's desires, and those are, those are mine as well.
Okay. Commissioner, anything?
Okay. What about moving, having the $5 million and then moving $5 million to the infrastructure fund and then $2 million to our road maintenance fund?
It could definitely be an option.
Because there's a lot of needs out there right today that we could use that on. And it would give Jason some, some funding to go ahead and schedule some of those things that he's wanted.
So, we could, we could, a suggestion might be to move the five for NMDOT match. Have the 7.4 with the caveat of a 10% buffer. And then, look at the plans from the road department of what we think can be accomplished in the construction windows. See what that total comes up to, and then, take a balance of that from here and commit it to that purpose. So, we could, we would come back, after we had that line item list and totals, we could come back to the commission and say, the recommendation is to move X million dollars out of the capital improvement fund to the road fund to make that happen. And here's the list of projects we would commit to between what the county could accomplish and what our contract resources could accomplish. That way, you, you understand this is what we expect to accomplish in this timeframe. And, and then, it's not hung out there limb and limb. You still have, you still have a, a larger balance in your capital improvement reserve. So, rather than just saying, oh, let's put this much over here, we would then know how much money for specific projects we're going to target. Because we have the list, right? And so, it's just a matter of pulling the top priority out and saying, okay, between our contract resources and our, and it has to be capital, right? I mean, it's, so it has to be capital improvements, not maintenance. So, the maintenance monies, they're going to go do their maintenance stuff. These would be capital improvements to, to roads. We could use those funds for.
But I want to move some, some of that to the maintenance side, too, that we can use on maintenance.
Can we, can we come back? So, we stick in capital improvement fund and let Jason come up with a budget and at the next meeting move that over?
What he was saying was that it has to be basically capital, capital project. It can't be the maintenance. It can't be going out and.
No, it doesn't have to.
it can't be the maintenance. It can't be going out and, and there's structure roads, it needs to be milled up and, and fixed under maintenance. You can't use it for that.
No, I think Roberta says you can.
You can.
Oh, okay, I thought that's what, Al just told me you couldn't.
So we have it in capital right now, so to do that, you'd have to pull it back out?
Right, we just, agenda requests come back, say we'd like to pull X amount of dollars from capital improvement fund, and then to the road maintenance line item in the road fund.
Okay. I want to, I want to see that list.
I'm, I'm all about, I'm all about giving Burns some more cash to do stuff. He's been saving a ton of money and doing stuff. I'm all about committing some money to.
He's got two and a half million dollars now. So we, again, we need to see, what can we execute, and not leave stuff there uncommitted?
Yeah.
So, between the contract resources and the county resources, how much can we get done in the current weather window, and how much can we get done in the spring weather window, before the end of the fiscal?
Well, the good part is, that looks like the weather window is, is moving, is moving forward.
See, it's your fault.
Because, when I drove to work this morning, at six o'clock, it was eighty-two degrees.
Yeah, is this Phoenix, or?
It's your fault, there's no rain. So we'll, 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 we'll commit to bring you that list of capital maintenance projects.
Okay. As long as we can move that out to maintenance, because I want to increase that maintenance.
Can't be touched right now unless.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll bring you the list and the recommendation.
Okay.
Next thing.
Five out of this, so we have six.
And so on the fifteenth, whatever day it is, fifteenth?
Six, two, five, five.
So we'll have that list, we're in the fifteenth agenda.
Okay, great. Okay. Is there any other questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Okay.
Go for it.
Are you guys ready? We gotta practice one out of the way.
It's written down.
Okay. So hopefully my math is correct. I'd like to make the motion with the caveat that if it is incorrect, that Roberta will change it to be correct, to the desires of the commission.
It's, it's right.
Okay, it's right. Susan takes responsibility for that. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation for the FY twenty nineteen, for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty surplus, being committed five million dollars to the road construction fund, thirty-five hundred for matching funds of NMDOT monies, and committing six million one hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars to the capital improvement fund. Well, no, hang on, I messed it up. I have to commit the seven million, seven million four hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars to the capital improvement fund, holding back the ten percent of the two added funds, which would be one million two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars.
As a reserve, as emergency.
As, as, as a reserve to be put where, I guess the commission would see it, fit to be best allocated due to emergencies or. Can we make the motion longer?
That was good.
And I'll second, I will second that long motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Hatcher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on, maybe a little shorter.
Yes. He did that in the very beginning. It was in the very first part of the motion.
We have a request to set a hearing date for adoption of ordinance O dash twenty dash one hundred, extending the ten-year Eddie County Ordinance O dash ten dash fifty-seven, entitled non-exclusive franchise agreement for the U.S. Cable for a non-exclusive franchise agreement for TDS Broadband Services LLC, Al Davis.
So I knew that this was going to follow Commissioner McCutcheon's long, long motion, and so I put this in there purposely. Now, this is, this is the ten-year extension on the previous broadband service contract that we have. The service provider has changed, it's now TDS, but this is, this is just the extension of the existing franchise agreement we have with a broadband provider. So it's just a regular contract.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner Crockett?
I do not have any, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Woods?
No.
So what you're going to do is a motion to-
Go for it.
Propose this, so we can get it set for a public hearing like we did this morning earlier.
Can I have a motion? Somebody that's long-winded.
He, he's on a roll.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we request to set the hearing date for adoption ordinance twenty dash one hundred. That's good. I'll read it out, do it?
No. Do I have a second?
A second. Should we say like the date will be?
Are you prepared to?
Let me, let me offer a suggestion here. We, under emergency business, we have just received the tax rates from the state, and we're going to have to have a special hearing, which, if we approve it, would be Friday. So in theory, you could, can't kill two birds with one's.
No.
Oh dang it.
It's got to be fourteen days.
Yeah.
Huh? Fourteen days, oh crap.
We're going to have to go into October.
It'll have to be our-
October meeting.
Okay.
So we want to put that in the motion to be October the sixth?
Do that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a, uh, hang on, we had a motion on the table. Can I just amend my current motion, since it's over discussion?
Anybody?
Nobody's seconded it.
Nobody's seconded it, so you can go ahead and amend it?
Okay. So amending my previous-
Did second it?
I didn't hear her second it.
You said she didn't hear you.
I didn't hear her.
That's hard to believe.
I was tired.
Well, maybe not. Okay, amend, amend to say October sixth.
Just, so, yes, I meant to say October the sixth.
Got it, second.
Okay, do I have a second? Have a second? Call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on. Approved, disapproved, one indigent burial, Veronica Pars.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am meeting approval for one indigent burial for Denham Whittaker.
Okay. Any questions?
No, sir.
Questions?
Question.
A motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve one indigent burial.
Second.
Second.
Okay, that was quick. Call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Hatcher?
Yes.
Thank you.
You did great.
I just really wanted an easy one.
Yeah.
I'm going to have to get my-
That's a slam dunk.
I don't start getting my back together, so.
Reclassification of civil process server to certified sheriff deputy to Sheriff Mark Hage.
Morning.
Good morning. Good morning. This is basically just restoring a position back to what it was. When we had a, we hired an individual to be a certified deputy, turned out, he couldn't qualify, he seemed like he was going to be a good employee. So we said, you know what, we do need another civil process server, let's just go ahead and downgrade the position and allow him to fill that position. We've had some personnel changes, and he's no longer employed with us. So what we're looking at doing, and we've discussed it as a staff, with the, the changing landscape of law enforcement, I don't see us getting another JB Parker, who's going to be as good as JB is, with a, a, someone, and even a certified deputy's going to struggle to, to, to keep up with what JB does. But JB's only going to be with us about another year. We need to get someone trained up to take over for him. And I think what we're going to do, from the discussion and the input from my staff, is, we're going to, we're going to have to transition over to two certified deputies that do civil process, one north and one south. So this is just reverting back to what we had before, restoring that position back to its certified deputy position. We're even, we're just, we're change, we're discussing, rotating people through, it's, but it, it's a very, it's a very specialized skill, what, what JB does with the civil process. I think people really, really undervalue him, and I certainly don't. So that's what we're looking at doing. We, we want to go back to where we are. When we revert, when JB decides to retire, we're probably going to change his position over, or request to change his position over to a certified deputy position. Changing his over won't cost near as much, because JB's been with us for a while, and his salary is commensurate with a certified deputy, pretty much. So that's what my request is. My understanding was it was six thousand is what I was briefed on, but apparently it's sixteen thousand to, to finish the year out. But again, this is restoring it back to what it used to be, so.
Okay, questions?
I don't have any, I support this.
Questions? Mr. McCutcheon? Commissioner Woods? Okay, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the reclassification of civil process server to certified sheriff deputy, with an expense of sixteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-six cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Hatcher?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all for your consideration.
ICIP prioritization, fiscal year in twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five, Stephen McCroskey.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
This will be a short one.
Commissioners, since our last commission meeting on the ICIP, we've, Mr. Davis, myself, Wes, Josh, Brian, Jason, we've met, we've discussed it, then we held the workshop as requested. We came up with this list that I have before you all presently. If you all are good with that list, and, and want to approve that list, then there is a resolution to follow, to formally adopt the, or approve the listing itself. Then from there, I have multitudes of other paperwork that we have to take care of, to make it final with the state.
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Uh, I thought we were going to move that complex down below the roads.
It is. I apologize, somehow the list got snuck in there without the proposed rankings being in an order, but it is, the judicial complex is listed as number thirteen down below the roads.
Look at the fourth column over the proposed rank.
Proposed rank.
So it's, it's sorted on the wrong column, so the, the priority is, is, is in there, you just have to look at the numbers, so.
And I, I do apologize for that.
Okay. So we did do that?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm happy. Okay. Do I have a motion to accept that ranking?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the ICIP prioritization for fiscal year twenty, twenty-two to twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Question carries, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, resolution and agreement consent agenda. Do we have anything that you would like to pull or discuss for comment?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
Do we need to pull seventy-seven, or no?
Um, we need to pull, it's in the, in the agreements portion, it's item B six, we just need to pull that one out of the agreements section.
Twenty-one twenty-nine?
Dash one twenty-nine, yes, sir.
We don't, we're good on the matching funding for alternative routes and everything, that didn't change with our other?
I think so.
So we'll have to pull it if, if you, if, if we're taking it down to three point five instead of the five, it'll have to be modified.
I think we're leaving it at five, so we're, just making sure I didn't, hadn't messed anything up there.
Okay.
We're leaving it at the five.
Okay.
You should.
All right, I'm, I'm good.
So I'm liking it, or we're good, to make sure we're good.
Okay, well then, I would entertain a motion to, to approve everything except for pulling A twenty dash one twenty-nine.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution and consent agenda, pulling item A twenty dash one twenty-nine.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Hatcher?
Yes.
Okay. Addressing A dash twenty dash one twenty-nine, Al, you want to give us some background?
So, we received notification that ATF wanted the agreement pulled, and that there wouldn't be, it wouldn't be table, wouldn't be revised, that, that there was another mechanism to accomplish that.
There's, last meeting, there was an agreement, never ending agreement, approved, basically covers like this.
Okay, so we don't have to take action?
We don't have to take any action.
Okay. Department updates. Any department updates?
Morning, Carol.
As of today, we've begun retaining and archiving our emails. With discussion with Mr. Davis and Cass' table, we've decided on a retention period of three years to, for the FOIA, the IPRA request, so that we have three years, starting today. We don't bring anything from before, but that way we have a legal copy of emails if they ask for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to let you know, and Al can elaborate if he'd like to. Couple of weeks ago, we were kind of put on notice to apply for some CARES Act funding from DFA. So we went ahead and submitted an application, and we got notification yesterday that we'll be getting some of that funding, not only for the county ourselves, but for small businesses that have been affected by the COVID-19. So the county was awarded fifty thousand dollars for ourselves. And I believe we were awarded nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for small businesses within Eddie County. The City of Artesia and the City of Carlsbad did apply for these fundings as well themselves. And they also received some money for the cities, and also for small businesses within the city limits.
Okay. Can the small businesses within the city limits apply for the county funds?
No, but they can't, they can't double dip. I don't think we've really worked out a lot of the logistics, being that we were rushed to get them in. So, but they did let us know, we're going to have to come up with some sort of a system with the cities to ensure that there's no double dipping on businesses applying within the city and the county.
Can we publish in the paper the application process and qualifications?
Yes, we plan on doing all of that. When we come up with the plan, we, we need to get with the cities and come up with the plan, application process, so we can let the residents know how and when they can apply.
So I've, I've had some conversations with both cities. There's a conference call Wednesday afternoon with county managers to talk about how this process might occur. There's been some discussion about using the equivalent of a third party. Maybe, you know, Artesia was talking about maybe using Chamber of Commerce to help work that process. But I've talked to Mayor Miller and Mayor Janeway, and we'll all get together and compare notes to make sure we're aligned on the process, and that we do as, as good a job as possible in getting coverage or canvas with the monies that are available for the, for those grant applications. And so there would have to be some notification of, here's the monies that are available, depending on the number of applicants, you know, the monies could be a few thousand dollars to, may, maybe there'll be more, depends on the number of applications. But it's money that some of these businesses don't have now and, and need. I'm, I'm concerned that it won't be huge amounts of monies for any particular business. I think there'd be a lot of applications, but it's, it's, it's still a path that has to be defined and a process that needs to be aligned between all of the cities and the, and the county, so that we don't cause problems for each other and the businesses. But these are reimbursable costs, so the businesses would have to provide their invoices or expenditures to, to receive the monies, basically. So there would have to be a process to validate or- there would have to be a process to validate or verify and validate those costs, so that it's not just handing out checks.
Well, I think the one thing that we want to do for sure is make sure that we have community education as to qualifications and the application process. So, uh, whatever we do, I mean, all the alignment and stuff is great, but if we don't communicate that to the community,
then we've done no good whatsoever.
That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roberta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, just a quick update. We've finished Bound Road. That one is completed and done. We've now officially completed North Twenty-Six in Artesia. Um, our guys have moved over to the Sherrell Acre subdivision and the Joel subdivision with Chipseal Maintenance. And as Commissioner Carlson stated earlier, we're gonna keep doing maintenance until we can't anymore with Chipseal season and being extended a little bit, hopefully, and, uh, we're gonna keep going on these. We have several things to come here in the near future with the alternate routes you've approved this morning and, um, some of our joint projects we have coming down the road with Lee County and City of Carlsbad. We've had meetings with both of those entities here recently, and both those projects are very close to bidding and moving forward, so.
Thanks, Jason.
No questions.
Just sit forward.
I'm just gonna write something down.
Any other department updates? Okay. Uh, travel consent agenda. It looks like we have some future travel that we need to address. Any comments on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the travel request consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Call for the vote?
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Okay, emergency business. Any emergency business?
We do have the one item. Um, Mr. Chairman, we received a notice from the state on the, uh, Department of Finance on the tax rates, so we'll need a a meeting within five days, a special meeting within five days to review, certify, and approve those tax rates. So, um, that window would be Friday morning. It would give us time to get the information published and out there, so I would recommend that we, the commission set a special meeting for Friday morning.
Eight o'clock?
I will be out of town.
Okay.
Do that.
Commissioner Woods.
This Friday?
Yes.
I should be around.
Okay, then.
You're around?
I'm around, for sure. Okay, do we need a motion for that to set the meeting?
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea. Go ahead and do that.
Let's set that meeting. Motion, somebody?
Just make a, we just need a motion to.
Send a motion for a special meeting.
For a special meeting to set the tax rates, and the special meeting will be at eight AM on Friday, September fourth.
Fourth.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Call for the vote?
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, legislative update. No legislative update. Moving on legislators and elected officials' comments and announcements.
Good morning again.
Good morning, Sheriff.
First off, I want to say that, uh, it's very refreshing when we get reports about our budget and the foresight of the this commission and our county government that we have a surplus that we haven't spent yet, and we actually are doing very well on our budget and looking at another surplus, unlike what's going on with our state government. So, just my, uh, just my two cents about how proud I am to be here at Eddie County where we do things right. I will be coming, I I was hoping to have it ready for this commission meeting, but we had to do some, our due diligence with the, uh, sole source, uh, purchasing, you know, all the 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 purchasing requirements that we have to do, but I am gonna come and ask for a very small slice of that surplus, the capital surplus, due to the new things that I have to deal with, with, um, with the, uh, the the body cameras. We're already well ahead of the curve on that, but we're gonna need to make some serious, uh, upgrades to protect the county. And in speaking with Commissioner McCutcheon, there's also some that's gonna help, uh, there's a, uh, an item I'm gonna bring before you that I believe will help us tremendously when we have any kind of use of force issues. So, again, it's not a huge expense, but it's a very small slice of the pie, but I'll be bringing it to you next commission meeting and, uh, asking for your approval on that. I'm very disappointed, uh, the meeting that I attended with, uh, a couple of y'all with the mayor of Carlsbad recently, and we we discussed what the the new public health orders, um, came out with. It's it's very disappointing that our governor has chosen to use our children, uh, to try and strong-arm and leverage us and punish us, basically, um, by keeping our our schools closed when other schools throughout the state. We saw this happen with, uh, Sebelah County and McKinley County early on, if you remember, uh, when they were, when she was opening up certain things and saying, but not y'all. I think I remember, like everybody else does, where it said, uh, we're all in this together, and when we were doing really good with numbers, and we talked to the the Santa Fe, and we said, hey, we're doing great, why are we having to do what the rest of the state, who's really doing badly? No, 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 we're in this all together. If what we do for one, we do for all. We have to stay all in this. Well, we're not doing that now. We're being singled out in Lee and Eddie County specifically. I think Roosevelt has, I think, uh, Hidalgo. So, I'm very disappointed, and I I think everybody is watching that, and I just wanted to voice my opinion on that, because I think it's very important that we focus on the the, how unfair this is, and and just, we focus on what what's going on, and we need to be very cognizant that we are being singled out. So, with that being said, uh, Friday, I'll be sitting on the on the board to, uh, select a new assistant chief for the Carlsbad Police Department. Chief Skinner's got his hands full, so, uh, he, it's time for him to have have a right-hand man or woman. So, we're gonna be selecting that, hopefully, and, uh, moving on. But the sheriff's office is doing doing well. Uh, again, we've lost a couple of people due to retirement, due to personnel changes, but we're still, our manning level is still still good. We're still able to keep up with our, um, with our commitments, for the most part. I think, once things come back, we're gonna, we're gonna see, we're gonna have some challenges, and I think things are coming back here very, they're they're, it's trickling in. So, uh, just to let you know, we're we're moving on and keeping things going. I think you see a lot of in, a lot of activity from my deputies out there, and I think you you're gonna continue to see it. I'm real proud of what they're doing. Our violent crimes task for, or violent crime suppression unit is, uh, they're making a big splash. So is our drug task force. We're continuing on, because with this downturn, we are seeing a definite rise. Now, it's nothing to be alarmed about. It's not an explosion of crime, but I'll tell you right now, we've had five homicides in the county this year already. We usually have one or two a year. We've already had five, and there are two that occurred in the city that if it had been a matter of a mile or less, it could have been ours. We could have had seven homicides this year already. So, just keep that in mind. Um, things are, things aren't quite like they used to be. We have, we have some issues going on, but we're doing our best to keep it under control. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Sheriff.
County County manager comments. So, um, I wanted to recognize all the departments. There's a lot of things that go on quietly behind the scenes, delivering county services day in and day out, and and those departments continue to provide that with everything else that's going on. The county offices, uh, have have been open and accessible to county, to county citizens to get our business done. Um, but I did want to make a special, um, recognition for Warden Massagill and the detention center. Uh, they've got some, they're very busy right now. They've got a lot of things on their plate and and working with the state, um, and they're doing a great job to get that taken care of. So, a lot of extra time and effort and hours, coordination. Um, the state isn't as forthcoming as they'd like us to believe when the folks at the top talk about, oh, yeah, we'll be there. Well, you know, that's not the, that's not the reality when it comes down to the rubber meat and the road, so I appreciate the warden and his effort. Same same comment for our, uh, Emergency Management Office of Emergency Management, Ms. Jennifer. Um, she's, again, working behind the scenes to try and help. A lot of community elements meet their needs, whether it's with PPE or answers from the state. And I was talking with her last evening, and all of a sudden, the state said, oh, by the way, we're sending PPE for the schools to the Office of Emergency Management. Y'all take care of it. It's like, ah. So, we're scrambling to to help cover that, but that's, again, that's kind of the SOP from from the Public Health and and Public Education Department. So, um, Ms. Roberta talked about the CARES relief monies that were provided. Um, you've seen the spreadsheet, how it was, the their process for, uh, assessing and then prioritizing their allocations. Still hasn't been published. It's not apparent from what we received, but it is what it is. We'll 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 put it to good use. And then, there there's been a lot of talk about economic impact, and I've I've put a few things together, and I'll send you a copy of this little, it's just information, this little presentation, but, you know, the, with all the things that have gone on, the downturn, the COVID, the, uh, unemployment rate in the state of New Mexico, um, you know, we're, we're, um, seven point five percent unemployment, but in in, um, in Eddie County, I don't have the specific numbers, but the unemployment in Eddie County is is much lower than that. And part of that, Roberta was talking about GRTs and oil and gas receipts. The consumer spending, you know, we're, the state's down about nine percent, but in Eddie County, we're we're only down today compared to January about, uh, two percent. So, that's, again, a suggestion, and as the sheriff mentioned, that trickling activity continuing to ramp back up. What is disappointing is in small business revenue, um, in Eddie County, that small business revenue since January has dropped thirty percent. So, a number of businesses open has dropped substantially. So, that CARES money is needed, and and hopefully, we'll have the opportunity to to provide that. You know, the the small businesses open has dropped twenty-five percent since since the first of the, first of the year. So, again, what we can do to help those businesses is important, so we'll work to get that organized, is how we can share those, that CARES money between the cities and the and the county to make that happen. And I think that's all I I have for this morning. Thank you. Any questions? I'm happy to try and answer. Okay, uh, moving on, Commissioners.
Um, to kind of tag along with what Al said, um, our group that met Friday with the mayor, we're working on different ways that we can help small business. Um, one of the things we're trying to do is ramp up for Christmas and really do a big campaign about shop local, support your local merchants. We're looking at trying to do some kind of a Facebook page where businesses and restaurants can get on and let you know, like, what do they have in their store, what are their specials, what's going on, what's their hours, amongst other things that, um, we're gonna do for Small Business Saturday. We're gonna make that bigger and better than ever and try and um, just help these businesses try and survive. Um, also, Al and I are really busy trying to figure out the testing for COVID, um, to try and figure out these numbers, but Al and I have become aware over the last few days of just different places that are doing COVID testing that we weren't aware of, and so we're trying to work hard and figure out where they're sending their tests, and if those tests are actually getting to the state and coming back in numbers, and if not, how can we make that happen? So, we're working on that. Um, actually, when I get done here, I gotta make a couple of more calls, so that we can see where a couple of more places are sending their tests to. Then also on good news, as I told you guys, last time Carla Hamel with Main Street had given her resignation, we had ten interviews last week, which we had over, what was it, Damian, sixteen, eighteen applicants?
Overall, from around the country, there was over thirty.
So, we just had a big showing of applicants, and then we narrowed it down and narrowed it down again, and the selection committee, we met yesterday, and we're gonna be making an announcement on Wednesday after a full board meeting of who the new Main Street Director will be, but we're hoping that person can jump in quickly into that role, and we'll have them come hopefully to the next commission meeting, and I'll make an introduction for you guys. But other than that, things are just really busy right now.
Okay.
We noticed that that Commissioner Henry's not here today. Um, Don Kidd, his grandfather, and I guess his wife's grandfather, was has passed away. Don was a was a good member of the community for a really long time, a good, a good public servant, a good man. We'd like to recognize Don and all of his, all the good, all the good things that he's done for for the city of Carlsbad and and New Mexico and his service there. Um, a little bit lighter note, uh, Jerry Howell is your dad. I'd like to congratulate Jerry's dad on killing an elk. Antelope, sorry, not an an antelope. This was a couple of weeks ago, something like that. Eighty-three years old.
That's awesome.
And I'm not doing it, so congratulations. Congratulations there. That's all.
Yeah, he, uh, he's diabetic, heart condition, very limited mobility, mobility impaired, lost sight in his right eye, had to shoot left-handed.
Yeah. Doesn't sound like, doesn't sound like we want him shooting it at me. Yeah, I I I don't want him shooting it at me.
He's out of luck.
Yeah. Well, that's that's just.
Very cool.
That's just great. You know, it's amazing how things change. You know, he takes you hunting a long time ago, and now you return the favor, so it's come full circle. But other than that, I I, uh, I have nothing. Appreciate everybody sticking sticking around and and, uh, keeping their head up during these during these odd times. I likewise, uh, with Commissioner Crockett, talked to Al, trying to figure out anything we can do to get our children back in school and and get our, get them where they can have some social interaction and make sure that the cure is not worse than the disease, so.
Commissioner Woods?
I don't have anything.
Okay, I just, uh, wanna say, as a community, I think that, uh, we've been kind of disappointed in some of the rulings that's come down from our Supreme Court in the state of New Mexico. It almost appears, uh, political politicalized. Uh, also, you know, this is just a personal note. I think that the state government is cashing some political checks and creating some mental and health issues that the state of New Mexico cannot cash, so uh, that concerns me. Uh, but hopefully, the state, uh, the county is experiencing some of those problems right now with the the rise in the homicide rate and other things, which is a sad part, because we've got a great community, and I hate to, I hate to hear and see those type of things happening. But, uh, we need to, you know, we need to be proactive in trying to get businesses and people back to work the way they should be, and I think it'll take care of a lot of these problems itself, once that happens. So, uh, those are my comments. Thank you. So, uh, those are my comments. Thank you. Uh, looks like we're gonna have an executive session, uh, this morning. So, uh, how long do you think it will take, Roberta? Fifteen minutes? Ten minutes? Let's do fifteen?
Yes.
So, uh, we will reopen at ten o'clock?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board go into executive session in accordance with the State of New Mexico Open Meetings Act, Section ten dash fifteen, dash one, dash H seven, which authorizes the board of county commissioners to go into executive discuss, yeah, executive session to discuss and only discuss threatened or pending litigation with a FEMA update from Roberta Smith.
Uh, second.
Second.
Motion is second. Call for the vote?
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Crockett.
Yes.
Cutchin.
Yes.
Okay. We're in the session.